............ One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Prayer please.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and all that you do for us. Please bless all who are here and help us in making good decisions for our borough. We ask this in your name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Roll call please.
Matt Moore?
Here.
Bob Barlett?
Present.
Scott Gutcho?
Here.
Heavy Seer? Jim Steele?
Yes, here.
Steve Nutson?
Here.
Lisa Nutson?
Here.
Okay, we're into committee work session at this point. Finance and streets are not in this session. That was in the first session, so we'll pick up with law and ordinance. Mr. Barlett?
Okay, under law and ordinance, this has been advertised. We recommend amendment be put into the fire code twenty-four eleven, which will state that sexual offender, sexual violent predator who is required to pursue of Megan's law can be in the fire department. Also, you can down below twenty-four twelve, in paragraph C, we have what's refers to criminal background checks. We've added in there that all fire department members, response members have to meet those requirements. And we also have a sample of background check which Chief Collins will take care of for us and then we'll pass this.
So that's this form, correct?
Yes.
And this form's okay? So we will, we will vote on that in under new business then?
Okay. And also, we discussed chapter two thirty-three amendments to our refuse delinquency timeline. Wilson Avenue near Green Gables, so baby totter.
Yes. So the chapter two thirty-three, this was also advertised. This is just changing East Market Street, pretty much Market Street, to the new rate for the meters come. So it says a dollar, but this is for a two hours zone. So this is what we discussed and voted on to change that to a fifty cents per hour meeting or cost for downtown when the new meters to arrive. So that's really all I have for those. So those two were advertised and we'll vote on them here shortly. So sewer refuse delinquency currently, and I have put this in front of you, this is the current kind of payment of how we go about here. So bill is due by the end of the month in which they're billed. So for example, if they have a bill date of July, you know, if the bill gets to them on July fifth, they have till the end of July to pay that bill. So I think our goal is that the bills go out no later than the tenth. I think we've gotten that timeframe down significantly that we're ready to send.
They're never out past the first.
Right. Yeah, we're to the point where they're out prior to the month even starting, which is great. So once the bill becomes due at the end of that month, that first of the month following that date, so in this situation, August first, the bill would be considered delinquent. We would mail out a thirty-five day delinquent notice to the property slash owner. This is current code. Following that delinquent notice of thirty-five days, we then post the property for shut off. If we have no remedy to the payment, and then according to law, we have to post that property for ten days. Now, with credit card payments, mail payments, sometimes we have to give a little bit of a grace period. You know, that thirty-five days until we get our funding batch from our NCR credit cards, we gotta give them a couple of day grace period just to make sure that, you know, someone didn't pay and we're sending them a notice for shut off their water. Thirty-five days, you know, as I look at this, just it's, it's, it's hard for us to get on a good time schedule because that thirty-five days gets us out into the middle of the month sometimes. So some examples that I found around us, some will give a ten day door hanger after the due date, and then they add twenty-five dollars to their account. After another ten days, they post it for water shut off, and they add fifty to the accounts. So they're giving them essentially twenty days beyond that timeline, that, that bill date for water to be terminated. Another example, they give them a fifteen day notice. After that fifteen day notice, they'll give them another ten day notice for shut offs. So some of the fees that their other municipalities are assessing currently, they're giving them a shut off fee, they're charging them a notice fee, they're charging them a reconnection fee. There's a lot of different fees that they're throwing in there. I'm not saying we need to add additional fees. We do have an administration fee that covers that, covers some of our costs. I wanna look a little deeper into our administration fee to make sure it's covering everything. The water company does charge us a ten dollar shut off and a ten dollar turn on fee that we do put onto the residence account. So I'm putting this in your brains now to start to think about it, chew on it. I personally would like to maybe try to shorten that thirty-five day window down to like maybe twenty or twenty-five days, and try to get this closer to one month following the due date, so it's a quicker, cleaner process. What happens is when you have those three cycles, it's going across different cycles till you get everything in, and then it kinda sometimes becomes a a little bit of a mess because you're trying to remember, okay, cycle one, but now we're gonna delinquently, give a delinquent bill for cycle two, but now we're gonna do cycle one shut offs, and it starts to overlap a lot. So something to think about. Hopefully, I can bring you something at our August meeting that has some more specifics. But I just wanted to put this on your radar as this is something that I'm looking into right now. If everybody's okay with at least that initial look and see what's... Just trying to clean it up a little bit. Caitlin, do you have anything to add? Code wise?
No. Once they get shut off, they become condemned, and then we have to go out and condemn them. So it is definitely a lot that goes into it. We do put door hangers on whenever we post the shut offs, so they can clearly see that it is shut off because of non-payment. And then you also have to keep in mind, we have to go out and condemn them as well if they're shut off because the water company is also shutting them off. So that's also getting added on to code enforcement's league law and regulations.
So that's two trips to the resident, potentially.
And there has been some mistakes that the water companies made where they were shut off by us, and then the water company shut them off, and inadvertently the water company turned them back on when the water company bill was paid but not the sewer. So there were some issues there that we have to work out to make sure that we're catching that stuff, so the water company is keeping them off or not giving a sewer.
And I think the water company's doing a better job now noting this, their system when the borough sewer is off, that then they're not turning them back on, so. Mark, do you see anything that we can't go shorter than thirty-five days? I mean, that, that's.
The reason that's in there is because there's a thirty day period in the Water Services Act. So I'll send you a copy of that, so you can look into that too. I'm not sure you can go shorter than thirty.
Would that include the ten days that we actually shut them off?
It also talks about a ten day period too, so we'll, we'll take a look at this and see if we can figure out.
So this is gonna come back up? So this, we're gonna, yeah, this is nothing. This is just a discussion, putting on your radar that.
Hi, just a thought. I know the water company to circumvent the NCR wait time. If somebody's shut off for non-payment, the only payments they have to step to turn it back on is cash. So just good for thought, because then you don't have to wait for the NCR to clear or the tech to clear.
Right. I think some of it is like if they pay on the third.
I think once we get back on a regular schedule, we might be able to implement that.
Right, get back on that regular schedule. Yeah.
But it's not that's what they want. How do they pay the NCR to stop that?
Yeah.
Can you remind that chart I sent you for quarter three and four? I mean, that seems like a very doable timeline.
So Caitlin, I have a question. Do you think today there was a process when the water authority shuts off the water? Do they check with the borough to make sure that all utilities are paid enough today and there's no delinquencies? Or is it two independent arms that are not in tandem?
No. So when they shut off the water for their non-payment, they shut it off and don't know, might have put a warning on this until a week later, same thing still.
Oh, yeah, I mean, when they turn it back on, I'm sorry.
They do not check with us. They just turn it back on for, if somebody pays a water bill, if it's shut off for a non-payment of the water, and the water gets paid, they'll turn it back on unless we have already paid them to keep it off for sewers.
Now, you know if they notate a reason why it was shut off, whether it was a building issue on their end or our end?
Yeah, it's a one note notice.
Okay, alright.
I just wanted to, so this is what it would look like if, I think this is what we can actually follow now. So if we would start the last cycle, the last quarter, the bill, the delinquency would go out six days after it was due, which would be November sixth, and then they would have until December fifth to pay it. So it became delinquent November first, they have until December fifth, so they basically have thirty-five days. And if we were, right now, we're putting out our delinquencies, mailing them, and then waiting to put out the termination notices, but if we clean up the timeline of when they're put out.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that water act to see if we can include that termination notice within that thirty-five days, or if it has to be in thirty-five days and then beyond.
Because you're telling them they have thirty-five days after it's delinquent to pay, or they're gonna get shut off, so overnose, they shouldn't just be saying that.
Yeah, it says it on the bill, right?
Yeah. Well, no, it doesn't, no, it just says when you're delinquent on the bill, but it doesn't say when you're gonna get shut off.
Oh, okay.
But if we send out a delinquency notice a couple of days after it was delinquent saying you have until, you have one month to pay, thirty-five days from when it was delinquent, and then send a termination notice out two weeks later saying, hey, you didn't pay yet, so you have thirty-five days to pay, and then get the shut offs.
So yeah, we'll look into it, look at the water act here, and just, I want to at least put on your radar as, I'll get something else to you prior to council next week. Wilson Avenue. Caitlin, will you brief them while I pull this up?
Yeah, so we had a resident come in. She noticed specifically during softball games and stuff, that it's really difficult to come up with an alley onto Wilson Avenue, especially if cars are parked on both sides of Wilson Avenue. She was wondering if there was a way to make it so that they're only parking on one side of the street. Uh, she could not bring it to streets because, uh, whatever. She thought they were still confined into one meeting instead of two separate ones. So it's that alley specifically on the left there with the lines painted red, shows that normally dark softball games and stuff, both sides of the street are completely parkable, and she can't see or actually make the turn. So pull out onto Wilson. Um, most of the cars that are on the right there you can see are Green Gable residents, even though they have an entire parking lot parked in, they park there. Um, but that was for concern. She thinks it's a safety issue. She wanted it brought up.
So, so what does she want? She would like to see if you could, if one side could become a no parking. Obviously, this is during softball games only. Now, I will say that girls softball has tremendously expanded in the area lately. They may be to the point where they outgrow Green Gables because they have so many teams down there. But obviously, this was a request to bring this to council for.
Can we make it just parking on one side?
And that's what she's essentially requesting. So.
So I have the cars?
Right, one side, because she was pulling in and out of the alley, essentially this becomes a runway street with cars on both sides, so. We can look into it and bring it back to streets for. Yeah, let's take it straight and see. Uh, Bob, I think that's what we talked about for this.
Bob, anything else for law and ordinance?
Yep, we got it covered.
Did it?
Yes.
Anybody in the community, talk, community.
Anybody else from counseling for law and ordinance? Okay, well then we'll move into public comment. So we're moving.
Can we do it real quick? Amendments, so I just, amendments to the council agenda. I got a facility use form request just today for an eighteen U girls softball team would like to rent out the Green Gables. I think like in the next day or two, for, for two days of practice. So he filled out the facility form. I told him not paying it until I go through council approval, but it's for a softball team to utilize that field for a day or two down there. But if that's something, could I have a motion to add this to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add it.
Sorry. All in favor, say aye. I oppose? So that'll be under new business. Actually, I'm gonna put it in the consent agenda. Okay.
Okay, we'll move into public comment. Anybody would like to address us that has something to do with the agenda? And you have a three minute time limit, so the floor is open to whoever.
Does that have to do with the streets, do?
Yes, but yeah, we can, we can deal with that. Step up and give us your name and where you live, please.
My name is Bill Garrett, and I'm with the Church of Christ in Lewis County at three oh one South Pine Street.
You'll count revival, right?
Yeah, fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have a street that comes into our parking lot that has, has had ten inch potholes in it. You stopped paving about twenty-two hundred feet per when you paved the streets. So I have gotten a proposal to pave your street, because I was asked to do that by Ben here, where he is, or he's back there. Okay, and he told me that you have no interest in paving that section of the street. So I asked if we would pave it, would you allow that? This is my question. Thank you.
So you're paving your back lot there?
No, we're, we wanna pave your street.
Oh, just the street, okay.
Well, and I'm gonna pave some of the lot also.
Yeah, okay.
It's that section of street, right? About where you, right there is about where you stop.
Yeah.
Uh, right there, you can see that nice pavement there. I have a little map. There's thirteen potholes that are more than six inches deep. And you're, the day I was meeting with Ben, they got filled in with cold patch. So I would, I would like permission to pave it. I would like you to consider paying a portion of it or something, twelve thousand and eight hundred bucks. Twelve thousand eight seventy, just for your section, and your section actually goes down into our parking lot, because that's part of your road even into the parking lot.
Correct.
But I'm not asking for that, just down to that alley right there where your cursor is, right there, that little piece right there. Not the alley.
Correct.
That's a part of the street, right?
Yeah. Yes.
That's our responsibility.
And it's our responsibility, Bob.
Yeah, I agree.
When you look right there, you stopped paving. If you would've gone another two hundred feet, you would've covered it. To that telephone pole, the second one on the left is where the opposite, that's the far side of the alley, and that's where the proposed.
So if council does decide to make it, just, we would have to get, we'd have to get quotes if we were gonna put any funds to this. We wouldn't be able to just pay it. We'd have to, I'd have to get quotes.
I mean, I have to say, I agree with Matt and Bob's sentiment. I think it's a public street. We should take care of it, not an alley.
Absolutely, you shouldn't have to do that.
Well, I approached it two years ago. I didn't meet with you all, but I know that you're a predecessor.
So what we need to do, we get the quotes, he gets the quotes, sir?
I can get the quotes. What I can do is, we've hashed out a couple options for some of these alleys to pave. So what I'll do is, I'm just gonna have to add this to the list, go there North Pine, and I'm just gonna just make that one project.
Hey, sir, would it be possible for you to share your quote?
I have it.
With Tyler?
Yep, I have one.
Maybe you can reach out to them and have them change the name to us as the.
Yeah, yeah. It's through Tate, right? You got, is yours through Jeff Tate?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let me.
No, I left them with Ben.
Yep. When were you expecting, or were you on their schedule?
I will be after this meeting. I'm just wanting to know if I'm doing it all or just my part.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, so for the, for us, for, for council to make a decision, I would have to have three quotes, and obviously, we have to choose the lesser of the three, or at least. Have the three quotes.
You have a copy of the drawing? You have a copy of the drawing?
I have the quote. Is the drawing on, with the quote?
Third page of the drawing.
Okay, yeah, so I have all that.
Whoever you're getting bid from, because it's all measured and all the handles are marked in the pottle.
Yep, so I'll just use that.
How soon are you looking to move on this for your project?
Well, I'm gonna release hours today, or tonight probably, because in order to get on their schedule before winter, it has to happen now.
I was gonna say it has to happen now.
Can that be used as one of the quotes?
Yes. Okay, yeah. I think Ben has your number. I'll get two additional quotes here, and I'll get in touch with you.
Okay, that'd be wonderful. So what I got from that is, we can't do anything with your road now. We are waiting for you to decide whether or not, after you get your bids, you will pave that.
Correct.
Okay, and if you don't choose to pave it, can we still pave it?
Sure. I mean, I think you tie it into that project on the farm.
Right.
And you might look at your alley there too, if you're looking at alleys, that alley, the pottle.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we're just gonna make that one project.
So we have a project that's a part of an alley up in North Pine. We're gonna tie this into that property or into that. And I can, but it sounds like we'll get this, we'll get this taken. You should not have to pay, to pay the, a public street that belongs to us.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We voted yesterday to do it, but we couldn't hear the response here, so I just showed up here, and now I'm getting some.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, consent agenda. Does anybody else have to, wanna address council this time? Okay, we'll move into consent agenda. A through E, we added E, which was.
We added C, number three.
Okay.
So Juniper Valley Striders put in a facility use request. This is for the Goose Day race. The Child Evangelism Walk-a-thon, this was one that we voted down because of the dogs. They are requesting to do it without the dogs, so they'd still like to hold it down at Rec Park. Essentially, it's just walking laps.
Okay.
And obviously, they amended just at the girls softball, Green Gables, so.
So I entertain a motion to take consent agenda as is. All in favor, say aye. I oppose? Fane report.
Good afternoon. Seven hundred and five calls last night. They were up a bit in the borough, two hundred and seventy calls in the. I'm working on a program to break them down as to what type of influence, but we had twenty-five fire calls, thirty-five murder vehicle accidents, six public services, two hundred and eighteen ALS emergencies, and a hundred and ninety-six BLS emergencies. The pediatric pads for the Pools AED went back, so I took the pack out of our stock and dropped them off the other day. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I do. Chief Douglas talked to me last evening about, we're getting some bills.
Yeah, I was gonna talk to Cody about that. I'm not sure why they're getting bills.
Okay.
And I got to talk to Pat at length. So what we do with all the fire departments is, all the firefighters are our members. So they're considered members, so they don't ever have to pay anything out of pocket. But normally, what happens is the bills go to Workman's Comp. And then whatever Workman's Comp pays, that's what we take, and that's the end of it. But I don't know why, other than if the station captains or whoever's supposed to file the claims isn't filing with Cody, I don't know.
Okay, alright. I knew there was one from the Burnham call, and then one here from the Valley Street.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and they're both, but I don't, the two firefighters we transported to the hospital from that Valley Street fire, they would be getting ER bills too.
Well, one guy is getting one that's home addressed for a thousand bucks.
Yeah, well, that's the ambulance bill, yeah. That should be going to Workman's Comp.
Okay, I just, I knew he was here. He wasn't here to see us. We had talked last evening, and I guess the one guy just keeps getting it.
Okay. Right, right.
We just need to get a remedy for that.
Right, right. And, yeah, they shouldn't.
Okay. But I think, I think part of it is they need to come in and start to pay for Workman's. They were supposed to be the one that came in today, and I haven't seen them yet, so.
We're getting there.
Alright, anything else for him? There's no mayor report. She, she's on the way to Harrisburg, so we'll skip over that. Police chief, Dave?
Calls for service for June, we had three hundred and forty-five, officers for forty-eight traffic sites, thirty non-traffic, two DUI RS, and there were six hundred and eighty parkinson's issues. Six hundred and eighty. For the drug report, for the drug investigator, he had four active investigations, six new investigations. One uncovered by, made two misdemeanor arrests, did one search warrant, and seized approximately four grams of methamphetamine and six grams of crack and cocaine. He also did three Megan's Law investigations, one PICX investigation, that's someone trying to purchase firearm illegally, and assisted PSP with a search warrant, and yet die with a federal sex offense arrest. So he had a pretty busy. I know we've been talking about accreditation for a couple of years now. We've been working on it. Last week, they started our, what's considered a mock assessment, where assessors come in and look at all of our policies and procedures, and examine everything in the department. And the actual formal assessment then will be in August, April thirteenth, so. We're getting there finally toward the end of it, so hopefully by the end of August, we'll be done with that, but we'll see how everything goes. Also, just reminder, National Night Out is on August the fifth. It's a Tuesday from six PM to nine PM on Dairy Park. That'll include all county PDs, PSP, first responders, fire EMS, and a lot of other groups as well, organizations and groups in the community. Bastard, there were seventy-something that participated, so. Lots of stuff for the kids, you know, free activities, free food, drinks. Anybody wants to come out there and join us, you're welcome to come out. I think that's all I have.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you, chief. Borough solicitor? First solicitor?
Uh, I have some items for your new business, but nothing additional to that.
Borough manager?
Alright, um, just a couple of things, current and upcoming grants, we currently have in for consideration, an LSA grant, um, that we put in last year. We have a water and sewer grant and a sewage facilities grant that are currently in to help on the, um, treatment side, the collection side of things. Um, so they're currently pending, the hope is in October, September, October, announcement of those, um, grants. There's currently two grants that are open, um, one being a multimodal grant. So multimodal grant goes through, um, the Transportation Committee in Harrisburg. Senator Ward and Representative Benninghoff both chair the Transportation Committee, um, one in the House and one in the Senate. So, I'm gonna ask for approval here in, under new business to appro, to apply for a multimodal grant. This would be to essentially finish the streetscape in downtown, um, prior to them paving the street. So, looking at, this is a zero match, we do not have to match anything as a municipality for multimodal. So, uh, we're gonna look at putting together that paperwork. And then the other one is a Main Street Matters grant. There's gonna be more discussion about Main Street Matters later this week in a press release, um. But Main Street Matters is kind of a new initiative that, I don't know if Jim's here or not.
Jim is here.
Jim, do you wanna talk just a little bit about Main Street Matters and like that grant and what the purpose behind it really is?
Um.
It's more for the downtown area, correct?
There's a district development grant, which is available for infrastructure and, uh, public, most of these for private. Uh, the athletic piece, there's a business improvement, um, there's some other pieces as far as the sod. I'm assuming you're looking at the district development grant as I said.
Yeah, but in, with the Main Street Matters, there's many different avenues you can go down for this, so it's kind of a wide range. Um, but essentially, the focus would be on the downtown district and trying to obviously attract as many people as we can to this, to the downtown area. So, we're gonna look at that, at least pursue through that through DCED, um, at some point, so. Those are the two upcoming kind of grants that are on the radar at this point. Other than that, anybody have any questions for me? As we go down through some of these, I'll kind of explain different things as, as we go. Oh, yeah, yeah, so next month, um, we're gonna only have one council meeting, the meeting will be the second meeting, so it'll be the August eighteenth meeting. I'm away that first week and I was gonna leave on Tuesday, but now I have to leave on Monday. Um, so the August fourth meeting will be postponed and everything will be on the eighteenth of August. I'll put that in the paper and, um, put it on our website, so. So that'll be a longer meeting, one meeting next, next month.
So that's it? That's it? Anything for the borough manager? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We're gonna take these one at a time, I guess, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Recommend approval, it's, uh, to accept the, the changes in chapter twenty-four as, uh, Bob indicated there with the, um, in the beginning of meeting, under law and order.
So moved.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Recommended the changes in chapter two thirty-three dash forty-one as advertised, that's the criminal background check.
No, that's the parking meter.
I'm sorry, the parking meter, yes, yeah.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Recommend the approval of the rev, resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven for sale of property, so.
Yeah, I can talk about that a little bit, did I send you a copy of the document?
Yes.
Basically, what this is, is authority, um, to sell and to have the appropriate officers sign the paperwork for the sale of the Valley Street East Third Street property, um, that the borough, uh, sold through a bid process to Zane Swangler. So, essentially, you're just gonna be saying, um, pursuant to the borough code, you, you solicited bids that Zane Swangler was a high, uh, gave him the highest bid. You have the authority to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of the property. Um, you authorize, uh, officers including, but not limited to, Matt Morb or council president, Tyler Fink or secretary to, uh, execute documents on behalf of the borough. And that's just for the, the real estate closing, that's kinda later on this week, I believe, I guess.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Uh, wait a minute.
So, so I guess just to round that out a little bit, but I think Tyler, I think is planning on going to the closing. We'll have Matt sign the deed tonight, I'll get it notarized and return it to Tyler so he can bring it to closing and then we'll, uh, should be taking care of it this week.
Recommend approval to purchase the twenty twenty-five, um, escape from, for, at CoStar's price, twenty-seven eight ninety, plus the fees to be paid with insurance and claims. This is the CoStar, this is the CoStar's department swapping the vehicle, police department due to the insurance claim, so. Entertain that.
So moved.
So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
No.
E, recommend approval of, uh, for outfitting the police es, uh, Explorer CoStar's price at nineteen four ninety-nine.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
Nay.
Down to this multimodal. You want, you have anything else for that?
Yeah, so this is just giving us, you know, the approval to apply for a multimodal grant. Look at, you know, complete any paper net, proper paperwork that we need for that grant submission.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose?
Same thing for Main Street Matters.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Recommend approval of slip line, uh, sewer line due to broke, broken line at cost of eleven eight sixty to be paid out of the wastewater treatment cabin.
So this would come from our, um.
Collections, I'm sorry.
Yeah, collections, this would come from our, uh, discretionary money through Representative Benninghoff's, five hundred thousand dollars.
Was this the Dorkus Street?
Uh, no, that one's coming, this one's down on water and made, it was a, um, compromised.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? And recommend to purchase four roll-off dumpsters at the cost of twenty thousand, uh, to be paid out of Refuge Cabin. This is replacing ones that could not be.
Right, that are not roadworthy, you know, that we're gonna eventually scrap.
Twenty thousand a piece?
No, four of them, not to exceed that cost.
No. Not to exceed that cost, yeah.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Well, that was under consent agenda. Public comment at this time, non, um, agenda related, I think I might have to address council. Okay. Uh, I don't think we need an executive session, do we? Dave, do you need one? Okay, then at this point, I won't accept, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Thank you.